Girls, you've done an amazing job. We're super proud of you. We have some town of Oyster Bay news that we believe is very important to report. And the first has to do with some athletes that aren't afraid of any conditions. This past weekend, the town of Oyster Bay hosted a polar plunge where many of us jumped into the frigid waters. And I want to take this opportunity to thank all of our residents and our employees and fellow folks taking the plunge for taking part in a great event at Tobay Beach. The Fourth Annual Town of Oyster Bay Polar Plunge to Benefit the Special Olympics took place in Special Olympics New York. It's a very important organization that sponsors and assists so many incredible athletes, Olympians, all who have special needs, who we support and love very much. And I'll let you know that we truly were freezing for a reason this past weekend. Over 450 residents and friends took place in this plunge into the water to help raise important finances for all of the athletes of the Special Olympics New York. Special Olympics New York has over 67,162 training and competing year-round in 22 Olympic-style sports. They're recognized that all of these athletes and their families are never charged to participate because of programs like the Polar Plunge and other similar fundraisers throughout the year. We'll be hosting the Special Olympics New York Spring Games. The town of Oyster Bay will be hosting that this May. And we'll be sure to give you more information in the upcoming weeks. Keep an eye on our Town of Oyster Bay website because we will be promoting these important games. And we'll also let you know how you can get involved and help these wonderful athletes of this great organization. And I'd just like to point out that I had fun jumping in the cold water that day. And I was followed by Councilman Lou Ambrodo and others were there to cheer us on and were absolutely wonderful. So many employees came out to be part of this. Some there waiting there with a warm towel in hand. And I encourage all of my colleagues on the town board to jump in with us next year. In a very important recent development, I want to give you a review of a situation that has come up in the last few days at the Hicksville parking facility. Most of you know that I am brand-new to the town here, a little over five weeks as the town supervisor. But in that time, we found out about this situation. And I share in the frustration of our residents. And I'm equally upset as all of our residents are that this situation is happening in this point in time. Unfortunately, there are entities out there who are making this issue out to be far more exaggerated, fanning the flames that is necessary. And what is important is for the public to know that it is safe to use the Hicksville parking facility. The matter was brought to my attention because we have regular tours of duty of our town employees on a daily basis checking the garage. Now, at this point, we believe because of expansion and contraction in the weather, cold weather, due to the contraction, the concrete contracted and a crack or cracks in the facility were noticed to have grown. So this was brought to my attention. And we immediately directed our new Public Works Commissioner to arrange for an independent engineering firm, independent of the construction, independent of the facility, to immediately go to the facility to assess the situation there. And I have a letter from this engineering firm certifying that the facility is structurally sound and is safe for the public to be there. We had a number of companies that we looked at their cost and their availability and what they could do in a short amount of time. And we found Horani Engineering. That was the less expensive of the two companies. And they have the equipment and the availability to get there right there. We started the process on Friday. They were there throughout the weekend. They shored up the facility as to stabilize the cracks in the ceiling. And also, one of the most important things, safety first, obviously. But they are preparing a report for the town to determine exactly why it happened and what the fix is. And this is very important because this report will speak to the responsible parties so that we can ensure every step possible to not only protect the public, but protect the taxpayers through this process of repairs. So we immediately moved to make sure the necessary repairs were made to shore up the concrete decks at a time that would be least inconvenient to the public, in this case, throughout the weekend. When Monday morning rolled around, the facility was open, safe, and a total of 78 parking spots were taken up for this shoring up of the columns. We are in the process of retaining more parking spaces, also walking distance from the railroad station, so that our residents will have a place to park overflow of the parking facility. And people can look to our town website to determine those locations going forward. So we are minimizing the inconvenience to our residents. And we apologize for any inconvenience, but obviously, safety must come first. And I'm very proud of our workforce for how quickly they responded, how quickly they got a company in there to not only certify that the facility is safe for our residents, to shore up and stabilize those decks, and to prepare an independent report that will give us the data to get this resolved once and for all the right way. And that we're going to work to ensure that our property taxpayers are protected at every turn on this project. On the issue of protecting our public, I'm hoping that, I'm sure you all do, that we're officially done with snow for our season. But I want to thank not only our residents, but our Town of Oyster Bay employees for once again pulling together to take on a snow removal operation that was absolutely sensational. Thank God it turned out to be much less, but it was still a challenge with the ice and the rain and the heavy snow that was created. Our workforce is phenomenal. And once again, they proved that, working with the drivers from sanitation, from highway, quite frankly, from all departments who came together to move the snow, to make sure our roads were safe. And our residents were also wonderful, getting their cars off the road, their cooperation. People in all the departments pitched in, and they did an amazing job. And I believe it was the best snow removal operation of any municipality on Long Island. I'm very proud of that. Let's give our workforce and our residents a big round of applause. I especially want to thank Commissioner Rich Lenz and John Bishop and all the leaders of every department who made such a difference in making sure that our residents were safe and doing it properly. Well, if you love Tobay as much as we do, you'll want to know I love Tobay. Grew up there. It is a beautiful beach, and it is clearly one of the jewels of our town. If you want to help to ensure that our beach's environment remains as beautiful as ever and remains protected, then we want to invite the public to join us this Saturday morning at the Town of Oyster Bay's annual Tobay Beach Dune Stabilization Project. It's scheduled for this Saturday, March 25th, beginning at 10:00 a.m. And it's a great opportunity to pitch in with your groups, with your kids, your families, your friends, your neighbors, to help to stabilize our dunes by planting dune grass. And everyone who takes part in this is a true hero, just like our celebrity hero who will be joining us. And that's the New York Islanders legend, Bob Nystrom, affectionately known as Mr. Long Island, will be there as a volunteer to pitch in, to help promote, to help to protect our beautiful environment. And he'll be on hand to support this effort, along with many concerned volunteers who, quite frankly, do a great job every year. The participants can look forward to a lot of fun. And students will receive a certificate recognizing their community service. And that's helpful, not only for school, but for scouting and all the different endeavors they're involved in. Everyone can look forward to a free commemorative T-shirt, also free coffee, hot chocolate, delicious clam chowder, worth the trip just for the clam chowder, and other refreshments thanks to our many fine sponsors who donate all these items. And I can tell you, once the planting is done, you will leave with a good feeling that comes from knowing that you have performed an invaluable environmental service to the beach and to our community. Those of us who study Long Island's topography and geography know that the barrier islands are the last line of defense that protects us. And knowing very well the communities who are so battered by the worst storm to ever hit the United States in Superstorm Sandy, we know the importance of having a very healthy and vibrant beach and dune system to also protect the mainland. So if any of our residents are interested in volunteering, you can visit our website, www.oysterbaytown.com, or our Town of Oyster Bay Facebook page. And finally, another very important announcement, and that's our tolerance rally. As I've stated so many times, intolerance will not be tolerated in the town of Oyster Bay. There is no room for hate in our communities. This is a very important project that was brought to us by Councilwoman Rebecca Lessie when she brought this to our attention because, once again, there have been the signs of intolerance. Way too many times, we've seen it as graffiti in our parks. There's been some bomb threats, very serious, very serious marks of hate. On the internet, the heat continues. Well, we will stand up to hate in our communities. And that's why we will join in with the Plainview community for recognizing the importance of true tolerance and working to that goal by developing and organizing this rally coming up this Saturday. The rally is scheduled for 3:00 p.m. at the Town of Oyster Bay's Neighborhood Park located on Old Country Road and Gerard Road. And it's sure to just do that. Councilwoman, would you like to add anything to this important program?
I think you really hit, excuse me, I think you really hit on the highlights, Supervisor. And this really wasn't, although I was the conduit, it certainly wasn't brought to your attention by me. There was a concerned Plainview mom, it's always a Plainview mom, who brought it to my attention that there had been some, another bout of rather disturbing hate speech that went on last weekend in the Plainview community. And she really wanted to organize something to speak out against it. So I just knew that the town would get behind her and get behind their efforts. And so we're looking forward to, just as you said, a great community gathering showing that there is no room for hate in Oyster Bay.
Thank you. Having a chance to make these announcements on our public hearings, on our public programs that we're doing here, I will ask the clerk, being there in the hearings, to please call the action calendar for today's vote meeting.
Thank you, Supervisor. I have a motion to adopt Resolution Number P-7-17. On the motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Councilor Muscarola, second by Councilwoman Agnew. Supervisor, you have one speaker on P-7.
P-17.
I believe that's Bob Friar.
Mr. Friar, please approach the dais and state your name and address.
Oh, just for this particular one, not the other one? I put in for another one, too.
Yeah, we're calling this one separately. It will be pulled up for you.
Okay, hi. Bob Friar, 33 Chestnut Lane in LeBarre, New York. Just real quick, on the personnel resolutions, could you provide the names and what the jobs are, their promotions, on these new hires, et cetera?
We have two people who are being moved into titles that reflect their current responsibilities. Because of the law, the change of title does require a slight bump up in salary for one of them. And for the remainder of the year, that amount is just a little over $600.
Okay, could you name who the personnel are?
Going to ask, is Vicki here today at this time? Vicki, are we required to name our employees at the public hearing?
I'm, uh, I'll get her to the counter.
Well, Mr. Supervisor, until such time as the action is taken, the protocol is not to disclose names.
Okay, thank you.
So once it's voted on, you can disclose a name or question to you?
Yes, that would be fun.
Okay.
Okay. So after the vote, would you kind enough to do that?
Thank you. Thank you for your opinion and thank you for your testimony.
Supervisor Saladino votes aye. Councilwoman Muscarola?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mackinac?
Aye.
Councilman Cashin Gatto is absent. Councilwoman Lessie?
Aye.
Councilwoman Johnson is absent. And Councilman Lou Ambrodo?
Aye.
Motion to adopt Resolution P-7-17 passes with five ayes. Mr. Supervisor, we're going to remove from the table a resolution that was tabled on February. So may I have a motion to remove Resolution 94-2017 from the table, which was tabled on February 14, 2017? On the motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Councilwoman Muscarola, second by Councilwoman Agnew. On the vote, Supervisor Saladino?
Aye.
Councilwoman Muscarola?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mackinac?
Aye.
Councilman Cashin Gatto is absent. Councilwoman Lessie?
This is to remove from the table, not on the vote?
That's correct.
Aye.
Councilwoman Johnson is absent. Councilman Ambrodo?
Aye.
Motion to remove Resolution 94-2017 from the table passes with five ayes. I have a motion to adopt Resolution Number 94-2017. On the motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Councilwoman Muscarola, second by Councilwoman Mackinac. Supervisor, you have a speaker on this item in the law. Is Philip Healy?
Oh, yes. Philip Healy, would you?
144.
144.
He's speaking on 144.
There's another one in here. We got the guys lined up to speak. I'll listen to them calling their people.
Okay.
You got them all lined up?
Call Molinarri, please.
Just give them. What a true station speakers. They got to find them if they want to talk.
Good evening, Mr. Supervisor and councilor members. I'm in favor of this, you know, the whole vote, this contract because it's honored the town's commitment to the residents who had signed up for sidewalk replacement. However, when I look, you know, if I recall, right, it's almost $4 million. You know, I'm in favor of this. I went into the budget, and this is, I just wore the criticism on the budget. I did not, I went through a whole hundred and fifty pages. I couldn't look at the sizes. And I just wanted to make that point, that the budget has to be a lot clearer and on how things are identified. But also, I wanted to raise the question on this, since this is a $4 million contract, what does the town expect to receive back in revenues from the residents? You know, residents aren't paying $100 a square. So it's just interesting what, you know, how much the residents, the town's going to get back, so what's the net cost of this contract?
Certainly, Mr. Molinarri. John Bishop, please step up. Sir, if you'd like to take a seat in the front row, in case you have any follow-up questions, we'd be happy to get them answered for you. Are you willing to raise the volume?
Good evening, supervisor, town board. It's about 1.4 billion generated in revenue from the residents.
Excuse me, ma'am?
So basically, a quarter of the money?
Yes, 1.4 billion, yes. Is what we received from them.
And that's exactly where we're doing away with this program, correct?
Correct.
And in this particular case, we have a situation where we looked for an outside contract on this to determine if it was cost-saving?
Yes.
And how did that relate when you put that up against what it would cost our own employees to do this with time and materials?
We, whether this gets done within a year, it would take us two years, one more, and an additional $2 million.
An additional $2 million?
Yes.
So this was the least expensive way that we could possibly do this?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Molinarri, do you have any other questions?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Vote for the vote, Supervisor.
Yes, please.
Supervisor Saladino?
Aye.
Councilwoman Muscarola?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mackinac?
Aye.
Councilman Cashin Gatto is absent. Councilwoman Lessie?
I just want to echo, it's funny that Mr. Molinarri said what he did, because I really want to echo the sentiments. I was struggling with this. I mean, it's just an awful lot of money after everything that we've been through. But on the other hand, not a day goes by in my office that we don't see a call from someone waiting for their sidewalk work to be completed. And I know we're phasing out that program, but we do have quite a pipeline. So, sorry for the additional narrative, but I just wanted to let you know that while I have mixed feelings, I'll vote aye.
Councilwoman Johnson is absent. Councilman Ambrodo?
Aye.
Motion to adopt Resolution Number 94-2017 passes with five ayes. May I have a motion to table Resolutions Number 126-2017 and 130-2017? On the motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Councilwoman Muscarola, second by Councilwoman Mackinac. On the vote, Supervisor Saladino?
Aye.
Councilwoman Muscarola?
Aye.
Councilwoman Mackinac?
Aye.
Councilman Cashin Gatto is absent. Councilwoman Lessie?
Aye.
Councilwoman Johnson is absent. Councilwoman Ambrodo?
Aye.
Motion to table Resolution 126-2017 and 130-2017 passes with five ayes. You okay? May I have a motion to adopt Resolution Number 126-2017? No, no, permit it, please. 126-2017 through 148-2017 noting that 126 Resolution and Resolution 130 were tabled. On the motion.
So moved.
Second. Supervisor, we have speakers on 127, 132, 138, 144, and 147.
145 as well. I have 145, John McKenna of Beth H.
Good evening. John McKenna, K-E-N-N-A, 33 Williams Street in Bethpage. We are here, my neighbors and my wife and I are here just to keep monitoring the RW20 and 21 well process to make sure everything we feel is in order. Okay, this is here, Northrop is here. We just want to make sure that you see us here, that we know we're still involved in this. And my question, I had another question about the list of covenants that was discussed last meeting and hasn't, haven't seen received a copy of it. Rich Lenz said he'll get it tomorrow, that it's signed, everything is signed. And the 145 is the way understanding for testing of the Arthur Avenue basin and surrounding area for the remediation well and the process. We understand that that's, you know, if they want to, Arcadis and Northrop want to put that water, remediated water into the Arthur Avenue basin, we've been down it before, we talked about 3 million-plus gallons of water a day going in there. I don't know what their testing is going to result in, but we would just like your DPW personnel to explore another process or if there's an advanced process or some other way to return that distraught water into the aquifer other than just dumping it into a remedial water. It is, it's different technology. Every day. That's, you know, that's, I just, you know, this is the easiest and cheapest way. I just don't have to explore it as another way to make it work.
Sir, let's explore that right now. Would Commissioner Lenz please step forward? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lenz, can you speak to us about, first of all, the covenants and the agreements last time? We visited this with RW20 and now with RW21. And I know I've recommended it to you and I've assured the community that we will do everything possible to protect the community. Many covenants that would bring them extra protections, removing the liability from the residents, removing the liability from the town, and providing the town with oversight. As you and now the residents know, I've been working on this issue for 14 years. And in terms of getting the entire Grumman Navy plume hydraulically contained and remediated, we finally have the Governor Cuomo on board and the state, where we'll be utilizing some superfund monies, force them to pay up for our water districts, including in Beth H. And we won't tolerate pushing all of the costs on the taxpayers through the water districts. I know my colleagues on the town board all share my great concerns and my motivation to ensure that we get this plume cleaned up. Can you speak to the issues that were brought up and the assurances that we, that the residents deserve?
Yes, I can. We, as we said, we met the last town board meeting, and that was to vote on RW20 and the covenants and agreements that were attached to that. Today's resolution is to approve them to do soil monitoring and also surveying. This is for the treatment plant area. This is not the well. The well has already been approved. This is for the treatment area and also for the recharge. This does not mean that we approve that. That means we're allowing them to study the area. In the future, there'll be additional meetings set up with Northrop Grumman and Arcadis to then study further on the location that they're going to actually use and types of treatment that's going to be taken care of.
Thank you. Can you also speak to the effectiveness of the design that you've studied?
We have, they haven't really gone into the design itself yet. That's not what we approved.
I meant the utilization of the basins, the utilization of the process.
There's other ways, I'm sorry, Supervisor, I need to step over here. There is other ways of looking into different recharges. That's something we have to talk with Northrop Grumman. We have not discussed that yet. As I say, we, as you had mentioned earlier, we're kind of new to this, meaning that we're, I'm a new employee, I've only been here a couple of weeks.
But you have been working with the Grumman Navy plume and other contamination.
So what I'm saying is, is we have done it as a step approach. We have approved the well, we've looked into it, we've approved the well, we have approved the drilling. They have now gotten permission to have utilities moved and things like that. So we are progressing and moving ahead very fast. But at the same time, while we're doing the well and looking into that, we're also looking into the other treatment that will be taking place in the future. So we have not really approved that yet. We have to look into it.
In your conversations with Arcadis, do they fully understand that we have the ultimate oversight over this project?
Yes, they do.
Do they understand that they must adhere to all of the conditions and covenants?
Yes, they do.
And do they understand that protecting the safety and the lifestyle of our residents, protecting their peace, protecting all of their issues is of utmost importance?
They, they understand that also, yes. And they're, they're moving to make sure that all the residents are taken care of in these troubled times. Excuse me, Commissioner, we are going to have our people in the street making sure everything's set up and site safety and everything else as they go by? If not, they're going to report directly to you? Yes, absolutely, yes. Thank you, that's all you have to do.
Any other questions on this issue? This is not the last we'll be speaking on this. We're going to continue to push for the remediation of these hotspots. We're going to continue to push for the remediation of the entire plume. We've spoken with the governor's office, the DEC, we've met with the New York State Commissioner of Health and the Commissioner of the DEC, and that they too are going full speed ahead to, to make sure that we resolve this once and for all and that we build an infrastructure and that we build an infrastructure to fully remediate this plume. All of my colleagues join me in this. We are taking the lead approach as we've done for years. Not only in the hotspots that you worked on in Nassau County, quite frankly, in the Upper Glacial Aquifer, but also in the Magathie. We realize the importance of making sure our residents' health and safety comes first. And we are going to continue to do that. And this is a loud and clear message to Arcatis and to Grumman that this is our number one priority, that our drinking water is something that can't be shortcut and that full remediation of these plumes must be accomplished. And full remediation in a way that respects all of the rights of our residents and our town must be accomplished. And we're going to continue to watch over this like hawks to ensure that it's done fully, it's done properly, and that our residents are protected. And you realize that that's your mission on this.
Yes, sir. One of the things I failed to mention earlier also was the fact that we are working with Northrop Grumman and Arcatis on setting up a schedule for the well drilling. As soon as we finalize everything, we will get to the community and meet with them again and explain what the schedule is going to be so that they're aware of it.
Good. And it's not, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go.
I just wanted to add that it's not only the TCE and the PCE that must be remediated, the 14 dioxide, any radon, any other issues in our groundwater. We are looking for a full remediation of this plume as, quite frankly, applicable and for including the legislation that we passed some four years ago that's led to this day. The DEC will be conducting a new study, is beginning that now. And we must ensure that that leads us to the infrastructure to get built and to finally get this plume entirely hydraulically contained and remediated, not only in the Upper Glacial, but most importantly, in the Magathie aquifer without having to rely on wellhead treatment, which we know is not as full a remediation as the full containment.
And work out is going to be conducive to the residents? We're not going to?
Yes, that was, that was something that was approved. I'm just, I'm just drawing a blank. Was it? I think it was, I think we agreed to eight to five.
Excellent, thank you.
But it was agreed to with the residents. I'm sorry, it was two different times and that's what's floating in my head. I think it is definitely.
Commissioner, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, one last question, very important. We have an end date that construction must be concluded by?
We are looking to have the construction of the well done before the end of the summer, before all the students are out from school. And then also, also not only the well, but also the piping along that street.
The street is closed and we're about to normal activity for these families.
During the summertime, yes. And then while, and then when that is done, then we'll also be doing the other, looking into the other area where we can take care of the treatment plant and also the recharge.
And that was the same for RW 20 as well in the meeting that we've had with the residents, who were very gracious and spent a lot of time with us to make sure that we are holding Arcatis and Grumman, their feet to the fire, to get this done quickly, properly, and get it done so that these residents can get back to a normal lifestyle and have a peace of mind.
That's right.
And you'll be in charge of that oversight each and every day?
Yes, sir.
Please give it your highest priority as all of the board members give it our highest priority.
I promise I will, Supervisor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Our next speaker, Sinno Craco of Plainview on 147.
Supervisor, my name is Chinu Chantel, Leaven Bridge, private label in New York.
Aye.
So, I don't know if you know, but I'm the one that sent you guys the email this morning saying my concerns about the Hixwell parking garage today. When I went down there, I saw cracks that I could fit my hand into, maxed at maybe one inch wide. And it concerned me as a resident. And it concerned me as an engineer too. So that's why I need to be notified, you guys, in regards to that. You had that report over there. If you don't mind, I'd like to take a look at that and see who signed off on that.
It's signed by Leonard LaSala, professional engineer, vice president of engineering of Hirani Engineering and Land Surveying. I'd be happy to allow you to take a look. Just so you know, the town of Oyster Bay has been visiting this site on a daily basis. And we thus far believe that the increased size of the cracks is due to the contraction, due to cold weather, although we're reserving decision, obviously, to let the experts confirm why this is taking place.
That's fine by me. Now, what I want to do, what I want this town to go through is, once they find out who is responsible for this, I want the town to go back and say, we need to get our money back to this. Was it the engineer or was it the contractor? You're holding, you're holding Grumman responsible for something they did over 20, 30 years ago. We should hold whoever was responsible for this garage.
We're already on top of this. I appreciate your concern and I appreciate your frustration because I too and the board members feel just as frustrated. I'm brand new to this town and to see this sort of thing is very disturbing to me. That's why we sprang into action immediately and grabbed the bull by the horns immediately to get a company in there to certify that it is safe for the public, because safety is first and foremost, to shore up those cracks so that we stabilize the shifting and get that done over the weekend so that when the traffic began, when commuters arrived, first thing on Monday morning, this was in place and they were not able to park their cars underneath it where those particles of concrete were coming down on their cars. In addition, we have held alerts to the press and have communicated with the public. We put the information on the town website and we let the public know that our town attorney has the mission of helping anyone who has damage to their vehicle through the process so it's not an adversarial situation.
Not a problem at all, Supervisor. But just so you know for the facts, the shoring was not done as of Monday. There were trucks there this morning and I saw for myself installing additional shoring today. Just so you know, just so you have the facts.
I think what you're meaning to say wasn't all completed.
Exactly.
Okay, and we're continuing to do that. We are on top of this. We have taken the front position of grabbing the bull by the horns and making sure this gets fixed and making sure that we're protecting the taxpayers at every stage of the game. And I'm hoping that we'll continue to see you, to give you updates at each and every opportunity to let you know where we're at on this, how we're fixing it, and how the resolution of this is full, is proper, is transparent, and that it's not done in a way that unduly costs our taxpayers. The responsible parties will take responsibility for this and that, we're sure.
Thank you, that's all I want.
Thank you very much. Kevin McKenna.
Good evening, town board. Mr. McKenna, would you please state your name? Kevin McKenna, 3rd Avenue Drive, Siosco, New York. I want to stay on the same, I wrote down the wrong resolution. I'd like to stay on that item that Chinu was just talking about. Supervisor, you mentioned, you know, that you're new. Let me just make you aware of something, maybe that you're not aware of, but I'd be surprised. I've got to believe that you are aware of it. This conversation that we're having right now about the parking garage is not new. A few months ago, when Supervisor Vendito was here, there was a whole discussion about this parking garage problem back then. As a matter of fact, if my memory serves me correct, Sidney Bound, who was part of the original, I think the designs, one of the contractors on the project, I think there was a resolution that might have been voted on, spending money back then to make the repair back then. Could any of the board members who have been here, could you elaborate on why that didn't take place back then?
I believe that was tabled, that motion, that resolution.
Right, it was tabled. So I guess my question is, with the seriousness of this matter, why did we wait for this? Mr. Supervisor, have you personally driven into the garage? I'm just curious. Have you seen it personally?
Multiple times.
No reason?
Multiple times, including today.
It's really scary.
Well, that's why we've taken this, can you use your time any way you like? But that's why we hired this engineering firm, Hirani Engineering, who's not an expert.
I'm just saying that.
I want to relieve your fear. Because I know you're afraid.
I know what you're going to say. I don't, I...
Excuse me, for the record, please let him speak.
Well, you're saying that it's my time.
You just asked me a question.
Well, yeah, I know, but I don't want to hear about the letter again.
Okay, then you can hear about the experts that have found it to be safe. You may park your car there and know that it is structurally sound.
We're doing everything to fix it. I don't buy it because I don't see, I think that, I think you should take into account that just because an engineer who you don't know from a hole in the wall because you mentioned earlier that you hired this company for the first time, I think you said that. That doesn't mean, that doesn't mean that the engineer can't be wrong, okay? How is anyone supposed to know for sure whether that building can collapse? You really don't know for sure, okay? I understand and I appreciate the fact that you have an engineer's signature and all that, but that is not any guarantee to the public. I just want to bring to your attention that Newsday did an article in Newsday over the past few days about this. And I know that you're all very, very busy. There's been a lot of comments that have been put onto that Newsday site, not a Facebook site. The Newsday site, as it relates to the fact that this is not new. These are people who are making comments on the Newsday site that have been parking there, that have had damage over the past year. Someone said that the town has had numerous claims and reimbursements. So this is not a new problem. I just don't understand why, why it's, you're basically waiting for the building, you waited for the building to fall down. And in defense of you, Mr. Supervisor, this was to the attention of not only the prior supervisor, but the prior departments that handle this. You know, the new person in the job doesn't cut it because there's hundreds of people in this town that have been involved in this in the past. Why has this ball been dropped? And lastly, because I don't expect you to be able to answer the question, lastly...
If you'd like these things addressed, I'm happy to do that. Are you done with your presentation or do you have more to discuss?
Well, I have one other resolution. Lastly, being that Sidney Bound was part of the resolution that was tabled and being that Sidney Bound was given millions and millions of dollars in the original design of this project, along with a few other firms, which their name escapes me. You know, you said that you're taking care of it. We should really be going back to the Sidney Bounds and the companies that are involved in this. And they should be paying for anything that has to do with this, with the monies that are being spent on this. They made all these monies, in my opinion, purposely, this is just my opinion, purposely using inferior, low-cost products in order to increase their profit. And in case you're not aware of it, this is deja vu. This exact situation happened six to eight years ago. The original parking garage that was built had to be demolished for the same reasons that this is happening now. So if the same people were involved in the first one, it all makes sense. I just hope that you're going back at the Sidney Bounds of the world and getting them to pay for this, that's all. The other one that I have is resolution 144. Has to do with the announcement that was just made about expanding and renovating the park over in Massapequa. Again, this was in Newsday and comments, just so you're aware of it. First off, I'm just curious to know, there's many parks. I happen to live on Edna Drive, which you know. And there's a park at the end of my block. There's a park on Cold Spring Road. As a matter of fact, there's a Facebook petition going around right now that I have nothing to do with, where someone's trying to get upgrades to the park on Cold Spring Road. I don't even know if you're aware of that. My question really is, how did we decide to take this Rising Funds money, which in my opinion should be used for shoring up the bulkheads and all that? How did we pick this one park over in Massapequa versus all the other parks? And the comments that are on Newsday are from residents over there. They're concerned that by expanding the park, that it's going to draw more teenagers, more drinking, drugs. These are comments that are on Newsday, which, you know, you could have that problem in any park, but how did we pick this one park?
I'm sure you'll be glad to hear the facts. So if you kindly take a seat, we'll answer the facts and make sure that the public understands the facts in this particular application.
Thank you.
So what we're hearing about is a New York Rising program that is taking place on the southerly end of Alhambra Road in Massapequa. This property and this mitigation program came out of a weeks and perhaps months-long program. The New York Rising Massapequa Community Reconstruction Plan was a very in-depth plan that involved mapping out the floodplains, the elevations, and getting tremendous amount of input. And as the state assemblyment, I attended many of those meetings. The public attended many of those meetings and some of the folks who were at those meetings are here today. They looked at storm resiliency, they looked at flood mitigation. And this program is designed for exactly those types of things. The bulkhead will be reinstated and raised, LED lighting. We have green infrastructure that's coming in. And this came about through the many experts and those in the resident, and those in the community who understand their needs as well as the science community who studies weather patterns, flood tide heights, and knows how to stop and mitigate future floods. And this program will be entirely paid for out of state funds and has almost no cost at all to the town of Oyster Bay. This is a program that the community has asked for, that we feel is very important. And this is the many ways in which we're going to work to mitigate future flooding in our communities. The community that this area is part of is one of the hardest hit in all of New York State. It has continually been hit with flooding. And I know this because I've been visiting that site since I was a young boy and my parents visited that site when they were young as well. That was once, the beach in Massapequa has a lot of historic value. It's also an access point to the Great South Bay for the community. It was also the site of a large operation of a marina that left heavy metals and solvents in the soil. So picking this site was very important toward getting the issues of remediation in those soils fully fixed so as not to leak into our saltwater environment in the Great South Bay and those adjoining canals. So this is a location that makes perfect sense and all of the concerns of the residents are being addressed. And you know, sometimes we hear reports about items that don't give us the real picture of what's going on. In terms of security, currently, all of those areas are fenced off and our public safety opens and closes those fences so that they're locked at night. We have some residents who would like to speak on these issues. And I'm going to call them up now because I think the timing is ideal. The next person I'd like to call up on this issue is Mr. Scott Aronella of Massapequa. Aaronella.
Good evening, Mr. Aronella. Nice to be here with us.
My name's Scott Aronella. I reside at 16th Seventh Place in Massapequa. I'm a lifelong resident. I'm also a principal in the Filmostic Association. I would like to speak about that Alhambra Beach project. It's something that is very meaningful for myself as well as all of my neighbors. We've been advocating for a long time to get some work done on that beach. I understand that there have been some concerns, especially with some of the very immediate neighbors. And I've seen... And I've seen many improvements over the past couple of years that have been done with taking over some of the properties that were there that were problems. There were bars there and other issues that were going on. Now that we were able to close that parking lot at night, I see that major improvements on the evening and some of the chaos that used to occur over there. I feel that this beach has been there a long time before all of us. And it's really deteriorated. And as you mentioned with the storms, there's been a lot of damage that has been done there. I believe that, especially with the state funding, that this is an excellent opportunity for us. It's a place that I'd love to bring my children, someone to have a park. There really isn't anything that close by currently. And I believe that it's an excellent opportunity for us to improve that space.
Just like to ask you a couple of questions. Many of us have been to your Civic Association meetings over the years, is that correct?
Yes.
And can you tell us what line of work you're in?
I'm in real estate.
Do you believe by making these changes at that location, it will affect property values in the South Massapequa communities?
It will, and it will improve it drastically.
Why is that?
Because currently, before it was more of an industrial site with a lot of problems and contamination. And now it's a wide-open area. It's a place that I've been going since I was a child. I believe expanding the park and making it a nice greenery and something that we can walk to and enjoy will be a huge improvement from what it is currently.
Has the community been asked to give input, give suggestions, and have they been fully embraced in the process?
Yes, sir.
And has the community then responded by doing just that?
Yes, they have.
Have their suggestions been listened to?
All of them, many of them. There's been many ideas that have been crossed. Ideas of different, some that were very extravagant, down to some simple things. And I must say that the town has been very helpful in understanding our concerns.
Is raising new bulkheads at a higher level among the suggestions that have been brought to the town and brought to the community reconstruction plan?
Correct. It's needed, the bulkhead's a shot.
And does the community want more access to the water, to the Great South Bay, kayak and fishing, crabbing?
I visit it on a regular basis, and there's always a lot of people there. And people even sit out at the beach. It's a beautiful place. It's one of a kind.
Will you continue to give us input so that this can be done correctly, the way all neighbors will be happy with it?
I'd be very, very willing.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. It's important to point out that in the article that was referenced, the Newsday article, one of the people who was the one to have expressed fears of young people in the community also, at the end of the article, was sort of saying, "Well, it would be much better if those safety measures were put in place." Our next speaker is Mr. Philip Healy on the same subject.
Good evening, Mr. Supervisor, Town Board. At this moment, it's thrilling after 12, 13 years.
Can you just start off by stating your name and position, please?
President of Bill Moshur Civic Association.
Thank you.
I'm thrilled after 12 and 13 years of this project, of going from an industrial area, blighted area, brown field, that we're at this point that we can accept, hopefully accept, the help from New York Rising mitigation plans for exactly all the reasons you said. The flooding that happens not only at storms, but at full moon tides, as many of the people know that. It's been a long road. It's been a slow process. The area has changed dramatically. If you can just remember, 13, 14 years ago, a fueling station with contaminated soil, heavy metals, as you say, boatyard that's been polluting for 60-plus years prior to that. I'm just ecstatic over it. I hear a lot of things negative. It's a great moment, I think, for us. Can't wait to walk the people from Siasa down and enjoy it.
Mr. Healy, were you part of the New York Rising Massapequa Community Reconstruction Plan?
Yes, from the very beginning.
From the very beginning. Can you talk to us about the type of ideas, testimony, and additions you gave at those community meetings?
Well, the first ones they had down at Massapequa High School, maybe a year or two after Sandy. Actually, there's one prior to that. They would ask us to what we would like to see in how to make our neighborhood more resilient to storms. Not just storms, but severe flooding. And the community got together, roundtable discussions, formulated the first phase of the plan on how we wanted to move forward, how to improve things, how to make it for the emergency generators, the firehouses, raising roads, whatever would take to make the area safer and more livable for us as a community. And as it went on, a lot of the New York Rising got involved, residents to help raise their houses so they could stay there. Utilities got improved. And now we're looking at the infrastructure to try to complete the whole package to make it a more livable community in these events.
So are you aware where the resources emanate from for the New York Rising program that's funding this actual program?
The best I can, I do believe I do. Where they are from FEMA, a federal program, that's funding some of this through state agencies that will look at how to make the communities more resilient. There was, the original program helped raise the houses. And this program now helps mitigate future issues.
Are you aware of how these resources were voted on in the state capital? Do you know if your local state representative played any role?
I can say, I know he was very involved, and I know, yes. Equally, yes. He's been very supportive, or you were very supportive in his state role to our community in storms. Not only Sandy, but Irene and everything before that. And we appreciate that.
Well, I appreciate your effort. I was very proud to be one of those spearheading this program from the Ways and Means Committee and also through the negotiation of the state budget, being a very strong voice for the South Shore of Long Island. But I appreciate, we on this Town Board, appreciate people like you and all of the other volunteers who worked so hard, night after night, day after day, on the phone, working with everyone. And I feel pretty confident that you'll continue to be working with the town to help design this in a way that suits the needs of all of the public and keeps in mind the safety of the community that you represent as Civic Association President.
No doubt we will, and we'll continue to do that, and we'll keep everybody included in the discussion.
Thank you so much. Mr. Healy. Mr. Rip.
My name's Robert Rip. I live at 77 Sunset Road, Massapequa, New York. I believe I'm on 135, 144, 147. Is that okay? I'm sorry, is that right? Is it those, those, those correct?
147, 144, 132 is the way you filled it out.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's 135. I'll start with 135. First of all, I want to say I find it very disconcerting that some residents come up here and have to give a statement, then sit down, but you have conversations with other residents. Actually, it seemed like they were... 135, actually, I want to speak to you about a number of these because these are those property cleanups again. And these all have to do with notices of violations being issued. And quite frankly, I think that it's both, it's hypocritical and a conflict of interest for you to vote on any of these resolutions because from what I've seen, Mr. Insurance Supervisor, you don't follow the town's building codes yourself. All right, I made a complaint based on your property, and I just want to say, the last person that I saw that acted the way you did with building fouls was Mr. Iblea. On 147, you completely misinterpreted the history of what's going on in the garage over there. And the backup documents that you provided back on October 18th on the town hall meeting for Resolution 5, rather, 753, substantiate what I'm going to say. And that resolution wasn't tabled. It was approved on October 18th. Okay? It's Resolution 75, excuse me. It was Resolution 598 to 16. Okay, so you have to...
I apologize for the mistake.
No problem. I'm sorry, I'm rushing because I'm on a time limit. You know, everybody else gets to speak as long as they want with the clocks going. All right, so there's a couple of issues here that there's... Number one, there's a conflict of interest with this 147. First of all, to start out with, it appears that these people are already working on this, but you're approving the resolution for them to do this investigation tonight. I'm not sure if that's true or not, but you mentioned that they started working already, and you're voting on this tonight. All right, 147, you're looking to hire a Herring County engineering to do on-call engineering services for special investigation of the parking garage. You want to pay them $52,000. But there's a conflict of interest because you refer to the original contract that they were hired on, that's 753 of 215. This is one of these open-ended on-call agreements. And when you review that, both Sydneybaum, who is the engineer who was responsible for signing off on the garage, okay, and Horeney Engineering are hired through the same contract. So that's a conflict of interest because how could one engineer investigate another engineer when he knows that down the road, that engineer might have to investigate him? So you can't be hiring Horeney to investigate this because they're part of this problem. They're not somebody new and different. But I do suggest that you do hire someone to investigate. Now, I want to bring your attention because this is what you really misinterpreted. Right, Mr. Antetokounmpo prepared a letter. It's dated 7/28/16, and it was provided to the Town Board, okay? It was written to Richard Betts. He's the former Commissioner of Department of Poliwork here. And it says, "We issued a report in October 215 discussing the results of our inspection and making recommendations for remediation. In February 216, we were again contacted by the town concerning cracks in the grade level and the first-level level decks. Since that time, we have visited the garage on numerous occasions to inspect cracking and study water leakage issues. We also met with contractors to discuss possible remedial work and attended meetings with TOB staff to discuss our findings. We then structurally analyzed the cracked slabs, studied water condensation issues, and developed various alternative repair schemes. We next prepared preliminary drawings, construction procedures, technical specifications, and construction cost estimates for the alternative schemes. Finally, we met again with TOB staff to present the various repair alternatives to gain town input and to select the preferred alternative. You asked that we prepare this proposal to finalize contract drawings and technical specifications, a technical specification for maintenance improvements at the Hicksville parking facility." And it goes on to explain their proposed scope of additional engineering services. So the Town Voice Debate is fully aware of what the problem is in the Hicksville parking garage. You already paid, on this resolution, this is a final payment to Sydneybaum of $177,000. I'm not sure how much money you paid them totally to review this work. And during that day, Mr. Antetokounmpo venomously objected to the damage at the Hicksville parking garage and claimed that that was normal maintenance. I was there early this morning. That is not normal maintenance. I've spoken to experts in the construction and the cement field, okay? You should already have core samples to be able to test whether the PSI was correct in that cement or not. All right, that's number one. Number two, that damage is not caused by water or sand or salt digging from the top down. Because the significant damage is lower. It's cracking from the bottom up. That's purely structural damage. Enough of that. I'd like to move on to 144, all right? I happen to live down there by Alhambra. I earned my living in the early 80s. I had my first two kids digging clams for a living. I was a full-time native, a real native. A lot of guys went out on the boat and went fishing. So I spent many days down there.
What year was that, by the way?
Excuse me?
What year was that? That you were digging clams off Alhambra Beach?
Excuse me, I never said I was digging clams off Alhambra Beach. I'll finish what I'm saying, all right? So if you go to Alhambra Beach, okay, you can see out to Smore Island, which is where I dug my clams, all right? At Alhambra Beach, it's a simple gravel beach. I mean, I can appreciate residents' concerns. And for instance, Mr. Saladino mentioned a bar down there. Well, that bar has been on for more than 20 years. And ironically, it was owned by a Town Voice Debate employee. So I, you know, there has been, there were boatyards down there. There was a commercial area. What interests me is the town was able to use eminent domain to take over a couple of lots, waterfront lots down there, and increase that area. I'm not sure if it's because of the... This is the first I've ever heard of heavy metal contamination down there. I never knew there was any contamination from the boatyards down there before. Very interested around about that. But as far as the bulkhead and everything that's going on, that's a gravel beach that goes out. The only bulkhead is up the canal. So I'm a little confused of what's exactly going to go on there. And... I think that wraps it up. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your opinion. I believe that's it on the resolutions.
What about me? I had to put in a form.
Smoke in the personnel.
I had 147 in there too. I'm on a prior 33, Chestnutland in Woodbury. First of all, since you voted on the personnel resolution, can you now answer that question, Supervisor?
Yes, we have two changes. We have an equipment operator, one, that is, has been doing the job of equipment operator two. And so that title has been changed to reflect their responsibilities. We have a messenger that is doing the job of laborer, laborer one. And the title's been changed to reflect their responsibilities. And their names are? One of the names is I, Zida, and the other is S, Vosilla. Thank you.
Okay, on 147, my questions are, and you know, along the lines of what Mr. Rip had just said, this is not something new. In fact, two years ago, we were talking about the disrepair of this garage. So my question to you is, who are the people in planning and development particularly that signed off on the inspection and approved all these inspections? I'd love to see those reports. Tell me how I can see those. Do I need to submit a FOIL request?
Yes, please.
Yes, okay, thank you. And any kind of related inspection. But again, what Mr. Rip had just said regarding a conflict of interest, it's no different than, for example, if you have surgery, just as an example. Let's just say you get a knee repair. You have, and the doctor, you have complications from your knee repair surgery, and you go to another doctor to try and fix it. That doctor generally doesn't want to fix another doctor's problems, okay? So you've got the same thing here. So Sydneybaum and Company signed off on this. John Antetokounmpo, who's a partner there, I believe is, is he also your campaign manager?
No.
No? Okay. Who's also a, you know, former P and D Commissioner here.
Actually, there's no role in that. I don't know where you would get it, if I can do it.
I was just asking, so thank you for clarifying. And, but I would like, you know, to at least get a commitment from this board that if it was, it is determined that there are structural problems in this garage, that every single company associated with building this garage never gets to do business with the Town Voice Debate again, 100%.
Just seeing if there's anyone else, making sure anyone else who put in to speak on a resolution. I don't see anyone else who's put in to speak on a resolution. So if a clerk could continue.
Call for the votes, please.
Supervisor Saladino?
Aye.
Councilor Mascherano?
Aye.
Councilor McEnroe?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cashigado is absent. Councilwoman Lessigan?
Standing as to 146. And just on a point of clarification, was there a correction made on Resolution 147?
Yes.
Yes. Then I as to the Gervay-Gerit 146.
Councilwoman Johnson is absent. Councilwoman Broderick?
Aye.
Motion to pass 126 through 145, noting that 126 is tabled and 130 is tabled, passes with five ayes. Motion 146 passes with four ayes and one abstention. 147 through 148 passes with five ayes. 147 through 148 passes with five ayes. We have a suspend supervisor. May I have a motion to suspend rules and add Resolution 149, 2017, through 151, 2017? On the motion.
Some more?
Second. Motion made by Counselor Mascherella, seconded by Counselor McEnam. Supervisor, there is a corrected copy to this, may I have a lead into the record?
Yes.
Please.
I see.
Whereas the Town Board Resolution 545, 2016, adopted on September 27, 2016, the Town Board authorizes the town attorney to negotiate agreement with Blessings Ape 3500 Sunrise Highway, Building 100, Suite 100, Great River, New York, to provide food and beverage concession services at the Honorable Joseph Holby Town of Oyster Bay Golf Course, Woodbury, New York, for a period beginning September 26, 2016, through and including January 1, 2017. And whereas, by Town Board Resolution 34, 2017, the Town Board expanded a license of Blessings Ape through and including March 31, 2017, in order to accommodate an ongoing request for proposal process to secure a long-term concessionaire. And whereas, Joseph G. Pinto, Commissioner of Department of Parks by memorandum dated March 15, 2017, has advised that subsequent to the adoption of the Resolution 34, 2017, the request for proposal was distributed and responses received, but that date, due to scheduling issues and award of a long-term concession license was not possible prior to the March 31, 2017 expiration date. And whereas, in an effort to avoid any lapse in service at the golf course facility, Commissioner Pinto has recommended that the Town Board extend a license with Blessings Ape through and include April 30, 2017, so that the responses may be evaluated and award of license may be made by Town Board. And whereas, in consideration of this one-month extension, Blessings Ape has agreed to pay the town a sum equal to 25% of its gross receipts for the month of April, which sum shall be corroborated in the event that Blessings Ape vacates the golf course facility sooner than April 30, 2017. Now therefore be resolved that the recommendation herein above sent for law and hereby approved and in terms of the agreement with Blessings Ape 3500 Sunrise Highway, Building 100, Suite 100, Great River, New York, 11739, to provide food and beverage concession services at the Honorable Joseph Holby Town of Oyster Bay Golf Course, Woodbury, New York, shall be extended March 31, 2017, through April 30, 2017. And be it further resolved that Blessings shall pay to the town a sum equal to 25% of its gross receipts for the month of April, 2017, which receipts shall be subject to the review and audit of the controller. And it be further resolved that the supervisor or is designated shall be authorized to execute any documents necessary to effect the extension. Motion made by Councilman Mascherella, seconded by Councilman McEnam. On the vote, Supervisor Saladino?
Aye.
Counselor Mascherella?
Aye.
Counselor McEnam?
No, on 149.
Yeah.
Get a food truck in for the golfers. For the Oyster Bay Golf, this is a bad deal for the town. I'm staying on 150, aye on 151.
Councilman Cashagano is absent. Councilwoman Lessian?
I want to make a food truck comment, but I'm not coming to it. Aye.
Councilwoman Johnson is absent. Councilman Nuroda?
Aye.
Motion to suspend the rules passes with, on 149, on four ayes and one no. 150, four ayes and one abstention. And 151, five ayes. May I have a motion to adopt Resolution number 149 through 151? Supervisor, just, is a suspend, so we have no speakers on us, so we'll go right to the vote.
And just like to-
Go ahead, some more? Second.
Just like to make a comment before we vote. Uh, before I got here, there was a committee of five to recommend operators at the golf course, and quite frankly, at other locations where we provide food and beverages. I promised transparency, we know that's what the public wants. And in an effort to deliver that transparency, we disbanded the committee so that the board could publicly hear the presentations of all the presenters. The board will be doing this in an open and public manner because I believe it's the right thing to do and it brings about a high level of transparency. So it's done in public, at a public meeting, with all of you here on the internet so that all can see the questions we ask, the answers that are given. We're not just going with a number, a select number of concessionaires, but anyone who responded is a qualified responder to the RFPs. We'll be holding this presentation on April 4 at 10:00 a.m., just prior to our open board meeting and in accordance with all open meeting laws. We tried to do this on other occasions, but some board members had conflicts in their schedule and we wanted to make sure that all the board members could take part in it. Because of this, a month would have gone without a caterer there. And knowing that the caterer had, uh, functions that had been booked there, we wanted to make sure there was no lapse in service. And that was the reason for extending just one month at a fee to the town of 25% of their gross revenues, so that the town and the taxpayers received revenue and that the events were quite frankly covered until we could hold this new transparent board meeting and do this openly in the public for all of you to observe and to be a part of. That will be taking place on April 4 at 10:00 a.m. I encourage all to be here so that, and it will be a very long meeting, but that's okay. We understand it's our job to do everything possible to have open government so you know what we're doing and why we're doing it. That's the purpose for the extension because we were being respectful of the schedules of all the board members and the public to have everyone together to conduct this open and transparent review of those applying for responding to our RFP.
Motion was made by Counselor Mascherella, seconded by Counselor McEnam. On the vote, Supervisor Saladino?
Aye.
Counselor Mascherella?
Aye.
Counselor McEnam?
No, on 149, I'm staying on 150, yes on 151.
Councilman Cashagano is absent. Councilwoman Lessian?
Aye.
Councilwoman Johnson is absent. Councilman Nuroda?
Aye.
Motion to pass Resolution 149 passes with four ayes and one no. Motion to adopt Resolution 150 passes with four ayes and one abstention. Motion to adopt Resolution 151, 2017 passes with five ayes. Now supervisor, we have a walk-on, which I have-
Before you mention that, I'd just like to say congratulations to the lucky couple, that Councilman McEnam, who, Councilman McEnam will be married in the near future. God bless them and check on to that wonderful couple.
Thank you supervisor. Walk-on, may I have a motion to resuspend the rules and add the following walk-on resolution, number 152, 2017, which is a resolution relating to, and I will read it. I'll read it, will you? You want to call for a motion first, or? Alright, call for a motion.
Some more? Second.
Motion made by Counselor Mascherella, seconded by Counselor McEnam. Here we go. Whereas pursuant to Town Board Resolution 786, 2013, the Town Board authorizes the retention of Covington and Burlington, LLP, 1201 Pennsylvania Avenue, Northwest Washington DC, for the purposes of representing the town interest in litigation brought by the United States Department of Justice and the New York State Division of Human Rights relative to the town's housing programs. And whereas Joseph Masella, Town Attorney, and Matthew M. Rosaya, Deputy Town Attorney by memorandum dated March 20, 2017, have advised that there are outstanding invoices from Covington and Burlington, LLP, And whereas, the Office of the Town Attorney has negotiated a discount in Covington and Burlington, LLP invoices, leaving a due and owing balance of $750,000. Whereas pursuant to Town Board Resolution 517, 2015, the Town Board authorizes the retention of Quinn Emanuel Eckhart and Sullivan, LLP, 51 Madison Avenue, New York, New York, in connection with litigation relative to issues surrounding a former town concessionaire. And whereas, Joseph Masella, Town Attorney, and Matthew M. Rosaya, Deputy Town Attorney by memorandum dated March 20, 2017, have advised that there are outstanding invoices from Quinn Emanuel Eckhart and Sullivan, LLP, totaling $601,304.69. And whereas, the Office of the Town Attorney has negotiated a discount of $61,432.27.
Yes.
A Quinn Emanuel invoices, leaving a due and owing a balance of $539,871.79. And whereas, by the aforementioned memorandum, it is recommended that the Town Board authorize payment to Quinn Emanuel Eckhart and Sullivan, LLP, in the amount of $539,871.79 and to Covington and Burlington, LLP, in the amount of $750,000, with funds to be drawn from account number OTAA142044110000000. Now therefore be resolved that the Town Board hereby approve and authorize of an amount not to exceed $750,000 in purposes of payment to Covington and Burlington, LLP, an amount not to exceed $539,871.79 for purposes of payment to Quinn Emanuel, Quinn Emanuel Eckhart and Sullivan, LLP, for legal fees, costs, and disbursements as outside counsel. And be it further resolved that the controller is hereby authorized and directed to pay said outside counsel for legal fees, costs, disbursements rendered upon the submission of a duty of duly certified claim after approval by the Office of the Town Attorney and after audit with funds available from account number OTAA142044110000. Okay supervisor. This is a walk-on, uh, I don't know if there's any comments or, or you just want to go through the vote, that's your-
Before we go through the vote, I would like to leave a motion.
We have to motion?
All right, I'd like to call forward, uh, our town attorney, Joseph Mosso.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor and Town Board. The Covington and Burlington bill had amassed over a period of time. Uh, it was not paid. One of the first things that was waiting on my desk when I assumed my duties as new town attorney was a letter for payment explaining that the work had been done. I reviewed very carefully the, the bills, the work had in fact been done. The work was done, uh, in a superb way. They represented the town very effectively. In a lawsuit that was brought by the United States Department of Justice attacking the town for its golden age housing and its new age housing. Uh, Covington and Burlington believed very strongly that the town was absolutely correct in its implementation of its policies to provide affordable housing to its seniors and to its young people, and that there was never any attempt by the town, never any, uh, uh, attempt covert or indirect in any way to engage any sort of racial discrimination. Nonetheless, lawsuit was brought by the United States Department of Justice which required a formidable defense. Covington and Burlington was selected because they had unique expertise in this area. As I stated, I reviewed the bills very carefully with them. The work was done, it was done effectively. Um, I explained that the administration, uh, was relatively new to this matter and that because it was a large sum, we would like to continue using them on a going-forward basis, uh, that we needed to have some sort of discount. And we began a series of negotiations over the ensuing weeks in which they agreed to remove $250,000, one quarter of a million dollars from the bill which is due and owing at this time. In addition, um, they also agreed that, uh, on a going-forward basis, they would be willing to discount their bills if they were paid in a timely fashion, namely within a 60-day period. Similarly, Quinn Emanuel, respected law firm that has been representing the Town of Oyster Bay in litigation involving concession ears, had amassed a bill that exceeded $600,000. Uh, I again began a series of negotiations that resulted in a de facto 10% discount in the outstanding bill. Neither firm was obligated to, uh, to provide these discounts, but they expressed their desire to continue working with the Town of Oyster Bay, their enthusiasm to be working with the new administration. And they also offered a further incentive, which is that if their bills were timely paid, uh, that they would discount them on approximately 7% per bill going forward.
Just a little bit of the background, can you tell us when this lawsuit was brought by the federal government?
Uh, it's my understanding that the lawsuit was initially filed approximately in 2013.
2013, and those of us who watch the media, this was a case that was heavily reported upon in our, in our papers, on television, in the news.
That is correct supervisor, yes.
When did we first, uh, join this party?
We, approximately the same year, sir.
Same year. And from your years of experience, is a case like this generally require this much work? It's a lot of work?
Yeah, well, it absolutely does. Uh, the nature of the case is such that there's extensive amounts of discovery that are taken. A great deal of statistics and data are gathered. Um, numerous depositions would be taken. Uh, it's largely a statistical case. The Justice Department was in effect accusing the Town of Oyster Bay of racism in its policies, policies which were clearly designed only to enable our seniors to remain in the Town of Oyster Bay. Policies that were designed clearly for the sole purpose of allowing young people to afford to remain in Oyster Bay with no discriminatory intent whatsoever. The case was built upon statistics. And because it was built upon statistics, it required a great deal of effort in order to rebut it. At the moment, the Department of Justice case is stayed. The parallel case by the New York State Division of Human Rights alleging effectively the same as the Justice Department is ongoing, but on a slower- The fees were not paid over such a long period of time that they amounted to such a standing, uh, that they weren't paid. They continued in their obligations and duties to represent the town. They could have withdrawn from their representation. And had they done so, not only would we still owe them the money-